Welcome, everybody, to the San Rafael City Council meeting. I think it's a special meeting because today is Tuesday, April 2nd. In observance of Cesar Chavez, we did not meet yesterday. So we are meeting today. I will ask the city clerk, call the rule, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
President.
Vice Mayor Hill is absent. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Maria Goulardia is absent. Mayor Kate.
Present. Three of us are here this evening. We did meet in closed session, and I invite the Assistant City Attorney Genevieve Coyle to report out, please.
There's no reportable actions from tonight's closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome, everyone, and a special thank you to staff who works every single day to keep our city running so beautifully. We are starting a new tradition from the dais where we share out about employee recognition awards that are given every quarter to the individual employee of the quarter as well as the team of the quarter. They are nominated and selected by their colleagues, so it is truly the highest honor. So it is my honor to recognize the team of Q4 for 2023. Obviously, there's a lag. It's the housing and homelessness team. On this team, I know we could clap, but that seems kind of tilted. Anyway, I'm going to name the folks that are on this team. Chris Hess, Assistant Director of Community Development, Housing and Homelessness Programs. Alexis Kaptanian, Housing Manager. Mel Burnett, Homelessness and Housing Analyst. Don Jebson, Chief Building Official. Robert Curry, Deputy Building Official. Erin Capriani, Community Development Department Administrative Assistant. And Lynn Murphy, San Rafael Police Department Mental Health Liaison. Congratulations to the team. Your work is incredible as we serve, as they, as we work to serve the folks that are unhoused in our community as well as advance housing policies that reflect our community values. We couldn't do it without them. So congratulations to that team. Prior to starting the meeting, we also include a land acknowledgement as part of our opening. In addition to the statement, we do work with the tribe over our shared issues. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewak people, many whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Welcome, we're glad you're here. I will turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment. Displayed on the podium and the projector is the timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom, and you can select the Live Transcript button on Zoom to enable the feature. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanofel.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We will turn to the city manager for city manager report prior to the council member reports.
Good evening, council and mayor and the community. I just have a couple of super brief reminders. The BPAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00. That will be here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room. You can watch the meeting via Zoom, or you can participate in person upstairs. And just a reminder that now that the weather is incredibly beautiful, the second Friday Art Walk is a great way to see the galleries and open studios and art exhibits. That will be on Friday, April 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00, and you'll hear a little bit more from me in special presentations.
Thank you. I will turn to my colleagues, Councilmember Kurtz. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to just share that over the last couple of week or so, I've been participating in reviewing all the grant applications from the, these are the community development grant applications that the county has. It is really difficult. The decisions will be coming forward to the council on, I believe, the next May 15th meeting. So we'll have an opportunity to review those. So just been taking a bit of time. Participated in the Homeless Policy Steering Committee for Older Adults and Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board meeting has been busy as we are in our planning process now for next year. And participated in the MCCMC, Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members. The Legislative Committee, there's a lot happening at the state right now, and many bills are getting through around for housing supports.
That's it. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I attended two meetings on behalf of the City of San Rafael, actually one for the City of San Rafael, one for MCCMC. The first is San Rafael Sanitation District. We had a meeting where we addressed several routine matters as well as continued working on our operational consolidation options that we are considering. We're looking to improve efficiency and resiliency with our operations, perhaps in coordination with other agencies in the county. So stay tuned, lots of interesting issues being addressed there. Second, on behalf of the Marin Council of City, no, Council of Mayors and Council Members, I represent on the Marin Transit Board. I met with the Executive Director, and one of the many topics we discussed included the efficient cooperation amongst our transit providers. And our Executive Director at Marin Transit is the Chair of a committee looking at ways to find enhanced efficiency opportunities amongst our transit agencies. So very good projects going underway there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a busy couple weeks. Vice Mayor Hill and myself spoke to the Fair Hills Homeowners Association two weeks ago. They had a lot of great questions and fantastic turnout. It was up at Falkirk Mansion, so that was a fantastic neighborhood meeting. As you well know, I've been participating in the Just City Mayoral Fellowship, and will be headed back with city manager Alilovich and Director of Digital Services Sean Mooney for our graduation in two weeks. We've been continuing to meet with our professors, and we will share that presentation when we're done. And it has to do with how do we apply just city approaches to our policies in the canal neighborhood is the project we're looking at. Next, I attended the St. Vincent Ribbon Cutting. They have a new facility, kind of kitty corner to where their kitchen is, where their lunch, where they serve lunch, and it is a housing locator office. So instead, before people had to stack up in the hall, so they actually have an office that enables people to have the private conversations that's needed with the folks at St. Vincent's. It was a very joyous occasion. You talked about San Rafael sanitation. As you know, I am your representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin, and we had a fantastic meeting on the 101-580 project. I know they'll be coming here and giving a bigger presentation, so I'll just do the quick snapshot. It was important to San Rafael, and I'm delighted that my board colleagues approved adding Alternative 7, which will be renamed. It's basically Bellum Improvements. What they found, they, being the data analyst at TAM, is by having some pretty straightforward improvements on the Bellum off-ramp, we could greatly reduce the congestion and the travel times for both commuter and local traffic. So stay tuned. I think that presentation will be coming in May, sometime this spring. Two more things. Councilmember Yuren Goulardia and I attended the Bayway, which is the county-led project, Bayway Waterfront Adaptation Vulnerability Evaluation is what it stands for. And we had an update on sea level rise adaptation planning from Marin County Transportation, so from TAM. And we also had a countywide sea level rise governance discussion. It's been ongoing. How do we all work together, both in terms of going after grant opportunities as well as finding solutions throughout Marin County? And one way to do that is how are we going to govern it? And I'm delighted that the county has, is bringing in an individual or a consultant, as it were, to help us navigate those waters. I just thought of that on the fly. So stay tuned, but it'll be great because San Rafael has an, we're a big part of that conversation, but we don't have the capacity to actually do the entire county. So very excited that Marin County is stepping up and leading that charge. And then finally, and I do have to say this has been one of the highlights, I was able to attend and read a proclamation at the Guide Dogs for the Blind 1,000th graduation. They've been around for over 80 years. They've graduated 16,000 individuals who have guide dogs with them, and I got to be a puppy presenter, which is exactly what it sounds like. I got to have a puppy, and I got to present it to a family who's going to be raising this puppy. It was amazing. So really appreciative that Guide Dogs is in our community and that they continue to do their good work throughout the United States. So as always, we are busy people. Thank you to my colleagues for what you do in between the meetings on the dais. I will accept any public comment on either the city manager or council member reports that you just heard. Not seen any, I will close a public comment and bring it back to the consent agenda of which it's 4A through D. My colleagues like to hold any item from the consent agenda. Not seen any. Are there any comments from the public on the consent agenda, items 4A through 4D? Yeah. Welcome, Mr. Vatari.
Good evening. This is a math question. On item D, there's a figure is 257,000 is the maximum amount that you're allocating for the canal parking striping project, and yet there's an appropriate $276,600 also listed there. So I don't know if that $600 was really part of this, or it was a mathematical error. I know it's a minor thing, but it's something I think we should always be looking for.
We appreciate your close reading. Thank you. I will turn to the city manager just for clarification on whether that is a typo. He was being very generous in saying. So it just, it reads, well, Director Miller, I think, is looking at.
The total, so the total should be 257,600. So the title, there's a typo, it should include the 600.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Madam City Clerk, would you like us to have the motion with that correction indicated?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bushy.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar with item 4D to be corrected to show $257,600 as the total amount.
And I'll second with the amendment. Thank you. Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 3-0. Thank you. We have two special presentations this evening. The first one is a present, oh, actually, let me do public comment first. So the two proclamations, one is of the Public Service Award, and the other one is of the Celebrate Diversity Month. Anyone in the room like to comment on either of those proclamations? Not seen any, I will close the public comment and ask my colleagues to join me down off Thank you. So what we will be presenting, this is always such a highlight. It's the Dick O'Brien and Mary Ferrario O'Brien Award, and I know that their son is also hopefully watching the presentation this evening. This award is always given to an outstanding community member that has gone above and beyond and truly embodies the values of San Rafael. So it is my absolute joy that this year's Public Service Award for 2024 goes to Tom Come on up, Tom. And now I get to brag about you. Stand here, here, stand over here. Let me read this. And I have to tell you, for all of you sitting there, you don't get to see the look on his face. Let me just tell you, it was priceless. It was priceless. So whereas Tom was selected due to his consistent level of selflessness demonstrated in his volunteer work spanning over a decade, and whereas he single-handedly maintains the path between Bahia Vista Elementary School and Spinnaker Point, he weeds, he prunes, he takes out dead plant material, he cleans up litter and coordinates group activities when the city has an interested volunteer group, whereas he also ventures far out beyond the neighborhood and does cleanups throughout the canal and all the way into downtown San Rafael. He does weekly patrols through the downtown and removes graffitis, stickers, and flyers from public facilities such as light poles, signs, trash cans, and buildings. And I can tell you, I have seen you more than once. We've run into each other while you were doing that on Fourth Street. Tom is a map maker, and he uses his skill set to map out trash cans throughout San Rafael, to map tree locations, and to map illegal dumping in the area. His efforts have prevented hundreds, potentially thousands, of pounds of garbage from ending up in our waterways, making San Rafael more livable and beautiful for all of us. Tom is the ultimate team player. You participate in the San Rafael Clean Campaign, you contribute to the Downtown Business Improvement District, you help organize Earth Day every year and Coastal Cleanup Day, and you often bring other groups and committees to offer a hand in the most humble way. Tom brings so much insight to the groups he participates in, and he's never too good for any task. He is a great team player, and he offers his support however he can. And whereas Tom's effort to remove the graffiti and the stickers from all this infrastructure have beautified the downtown corridor, it makes it more attractive to our shoppers and contributes to the economic vitality of local businesses. Through these efforts, Tom models civic duty and public service at its best. He sees a need and takes initiative to meet that need for the benefit of the entire community. And whereas Tom is the ultimate self-director-doer, not a self-promoter, the ultimate tireless and effective civic volunteer, he sets his own goals and always achieves them. Working several hours each day on San Rafael city projects, Tom's efforts and accomplishments have bettered our community in many ways, which has earned you the nomination and selection to be the recipient of the City of San Rafael's Public Service Award for 2024. Would you like to say a few words?
You make me sound pretty cool.
You are, you are pretty cool. We really appreciate you. And what I, what they captured in here was how it is self-initiated. You saw a need, and you have stood up and filled that need, and we are all the better for you doing so. So thank you. And we're going to do a photo. Yep. And there is, we actually, I don't, I need another hand because it's actually, we have a framed one for you. Yep. And Councilmember Bushy has something to add.
The, the award has been generously endowed by friends of the O'Briens family, and there is a financial contribution to Tom that is a part of this. I believe it's $2,500.
And you'll be recognized as State of the City Dinner. I don't know if the microphone caught that up, but he said part of that will probably go towards graffiti removal.
Mayor Kate, and while you're going to the dais, may I just add, we did surprise Tom tonight, so there might not be anything that you thought you were going to be doing that's going to be going on this evening. And you're welcome to leave whenever you'd like to leave the meeting.
The ruse to get people here is always quite complicated, so yes. We do have another proclamation equally joyful, and I will first turn it to the city manager Alilovich before I read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I'm honored to open this topic as it's very important and crucial to our work in local government. It's also diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is one of the key policy focus areas of the city council's goals and objectives. And last year, we put a call out to our workforce, so the employees, asking who would like to raise their hand and participate on the first ever employee-led DEIB committee. So they're going to introduce themselves, but I just want to make a couple of opening remarks in appreciation for Anna Alejandra Craig, Raul, Ms. Oh, Damian in the back with beautiful children, and Ms. Liz Darby, who doesn't want to be names but will be appreciated anyhow for her support in helping facilitate and bring her expertise to the committee. This committee has been doing an incredible amount of work behind the scenes that I wanted to elevate and raise in this conversation because it's incredibly impressive, and they're doing it with enormous hearts and creativity. They've had, they've hosted four luncheon learns for the entire workforce where we've had it on Zoom here in person. And so they've brought United Against Hate Week with a training on antisemitism, a training on anti-Islamophobia, Ageism, and African-American Black History Month. And super well-attended and really impressive group doing this really important work. So I really wanted to appreciate and recognize all of you. And if any of you are on the committee that I don't, that aren't sitting with the folks who are talking tonight, I want to appreciate all of our employees as well because we are all in this together. This is fundamental to the work of government. We are here to be public servants, to serve all the people all the time, not just some of the people. So I want to welcome the team up to make a couple of comments before we read the proclamation.
Thank you. Well, generally, usually face us. But that's what the screens report, so they can.
So thank you so much. It's great to be here, Madam Mayor, Council, Christine, thank you. Each of the DEIB committee members present, we're going to introduce ourselves real quick, and I'm going to turn it over to Anna. and I'm going to turn it over to Anna to say a couple of words. So I'm Craig Vermaim, I'm the Assistant Library and Recreation Director.
My name is Damian Oyobio, and I work in finance.
My name is Alejandra Barrios. I work for the library.
My name is Raoul Aguilar, and I'm a police sergeant, and I work at weekend nights. When you're sleeping, I'm at work.
And I'm Anna Wilson, and I work for the Department of Public Works. So on behalf of the city's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, we are honored to accept this proclamation in recognition of Celebrate Diversity Month. We, our colleagues who are here and those who could not be here tonight, want to thank the City Council and the City Manager's Office for the commitment and support we have received to advance equity within our departments and in our communities. Since our inception in 2023, we've broadened our reach, educating all city staff through our Lunch and Learn series and engaged with individual departments. We hope to have the opportunity in the future to continue providing you with updates on our work. Again, we want to thank you for your leadership in recognizing the importance of including all members of our city as a priority in our work.
I just wanted to add one extra thing. When it comes down to diversity and inclusion, a lot of people don't understand what the B means in diversity and inclusion. The B means belonging. And when you think about DEI work, the inclusion part becomes a lot more paramount. Like, we want to make sure we have everybody at the table. But belonging really means having people who are at the table feel like they belong at the table. So the analogy is more like this. If I have a party, I like to listen to certain music, I like to eat certain food, but I invite everybody to my party. We only can have what I eat, and we only can listen to what I listen to. That's the definition of inclusion. But belonging is about co-creation. We bring everybody to the table to invite whoever we want, and we all come with an idea of what the party should look like. That's belonging, because we want to make sure everybody who was at the table is not just at the table for a figurehead, but more on the lines of getting their insight and ideas and co-creating something together so we all be proud of. So that's what belonging really means.
Thank you. That was a fantastic analogy. Thank you for that. I do have a proclamation to read, and then we can do photos. Sorry, the logistics of this are a little awkward, so I apologize if you're standing there while I read this. You can sit in the front row if you want. I do have a few where-asses, or we can, okay. So the reason we're doing this is for all the reasons that were already stated, and the timing is such because April is Celebrate Diversity Month. It was initiated to recognize and celebrate the differences in each other and the diversity of the world around us. And whereas our differences may be seen or unseen, be it gender, race, ethnicity, faith, sexual orientation, or other factors, however, diversity is crucial in allowing us to engage with each other in deeper ways. And whereas the importance of including and recognizing people from diverse backgrounds to come together and bring different perspectives, experiences, and ways of thinking has become a citywide priority, and I can say a council priority as well. It is one of our four policy priority areas. Whereas to better understand our community, government organizations need to have a diverse workforce that reflects the diversity of our community. And whereas embracing diversity fosters a sense of belonging and inclusion for all members of our city, helps break down stereotypes, reduces prejudice and discrimination, and promotes social cohesion and harmony. And whereas the City of San Rafael's mission, and I would say it's also a value, is to enhance quality of life and provide for a safe, healthy, prosperous, and livable environment in partnership with the community for all community members. And it's imperative that we embrace the differences among ourselves and celebrate, learn from, and embrace the qualities that make each of us unique and the perspectives we all bring to our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of San Rafael believe that diversity can benefit all aspects of our lives, we ask everyone to use this month of April as an opportunity to embrace the diversity around us. We encourage all residents and community members to recognize the attributes that make each other unique and are woven together to create our beautiful community. So with that, let's have a photo.
We'll try to fit everybody. Who wants to, so you don't get one in the frame?
Well, for some of you, this might be a first council meeting that you've attended in a while, and this is a special one. We don't always get to have proclamations and recognize our Public Service Awards. So I'm glad that you are here to participate and be a part of both of those presentations. We have an agenda item that's equally interesting, on a different way. It's the Marin Countywide Local Road Safety Plan. And I'm actually delighted that Tam is here to present this. This is a plan that was presented to the Transportation Authority of Marin, and Tam Board did approve it. And we had requested that we have a presentation here in San Rafael because of the data that came forward as part of the research and the role that San Rafael can play going forward. So Director Miller, I see that you're here. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for having us here tonight. As you mentioned, we're here tonight to talk about the Countywide Local Road Safety Plan, which was a report that was done in conjunction with Tam, the county of Marin, and all of the agencies supported this effort. Tonight, we have Jen from Parametrics who's going to present. We also have in the audience, we have David Perissee from Parametrics. He's also, in addition to helping with this, he is the consultant who's assisting the city in acting as our traffic engineer, while we do not have a licensed traffic engineer on staff. We also have Bill Whitney from the Transportation Authority of Marin. He's the principal project delivery planner. And so I'll turn it over to Jen.
All right. Thank you for having me here today. All right. So I'm going to start off this presentation with some background about what is a local road safety plan. I will then give an overview of some of the key components of the plan. And as April had mentioned, this is a countywide plan, but it does include specific jurisdiction chapters. So I'll talk about things at a higher level and then deeper into San Rafael. Then I will turn it back over to April to discuss the next efforts, current efforts and next steps. So first off, what is a local road safety plan? A local road safety plan is essentially a roadmap that's used to improve safety for all road users. They're developed either by individual jurisdictions, or as is the case here, more regional jurisdictions. And they're data-driven, and they really focus efforts and foster collaboration to improve road user safety. And really notably, any agencies that are going to be applying for certain federal funding sources, such as Safe Streets For All, are required to have an LRSPO or an equivalent plan. So local road safety plans work systematically to identify and analyze safety problems and recommend improvements. They work to develop local partnerships and collaborations, and ultimately create a prioritized list of improvements that can demonstrate a defined need and time range for deployment, and be good candidates to seek implementation funding. This local road safety plan was developed in conjunction with a technical advisory committee made up of all of the agencies you see here. So we had members from 10 different jurisdictions and organizations, including the city of San Rafael. And the technical advisory committee was really key in providing feedback at critical junctures along the development process. They provided input on pretty much everything that I'm going to be talking about from here on out, and they also reviewed the draft of the plan. We also met with members from each of the individual jurisdictions, whether they are on this committee or not, at critical points to get their feedback as well. So this plan aligns with the vision zero, with the principles of Vision Zero. And this is a system, a broad strategy to essentially eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries. And this was first implemented in Sweden in the 1990s and has since been adopted by cities across the world, plenty in the United States, as well as Europe and elsewhere. And aligning with Vision Zero, this plan really incorporates a safe system approach into its analysis and strategies for improving road user safety in Marin County. So we are recognizing that traffic deaths are preventable, and we're using a multidisciplinary and a systemic approach to address these issues. The vision of the local road safety plan is a really key part, essentially putting forth what we are hoping to achieve from this plan. And as I said, this plan does align with Vision Zero. So our vision is striving to eliminate collision-related fatalities and severe injuries, excuse me. We also have a number of goals to help us reach this vision that you can see here. So we're looking to systematically implement proven safety solutions with a goal of eliminating these fatal and severe collisions by 2050. We're using a multifaceted approach that incorporates engineering, education, public health, and enforcement. We are targeting vulnerable users, so including people walking and biking, children, older adults, and people with disabilities, while of course striving to improve safety for people using all modes everywhere, and also ensuring that any safety investments are done in an equitable manner for Marin County residents. So I'm going to talk about some collision data overview next. The collision data analysis was a really key part of this plan to identify trends and recommendations. We started off with a countywide overview, which is what I'll talk about for the next few slides, and then I'll dive into some more specific San Rafael data. So for this analysis, we looked at data from 2017 to 2021, which was at the time the five most recent complete years of data. We considered all collisions resulting in an injury or fatality that occurred on non-state-owned arterial and collector roadways. So if it just resulted in property damage, this was not included in the analysis. And during this time, there were over 2,100 collisions in Marin County. And we saw a peak in 2017 of 542 collisions. There were 28 fatal collisions during this time, with a peak in 2019 of 10. And then there were also 199 severe injury collisions. And these severe injury collisions combined with fatal collisions are what we're calling KSI collisions. So collisions resulting in someone being killed or severely injured. And we saw a peak of 61 in 2018. The chart to the left shows the top 10 primary collision factors. So these are essentially the key behaviors that led to a crash. Those blue bars on the left are showing the primary collision factors for all injury collisions. The gray bar is for KSI only, and then the pink is for fatal collisions. We found that the top four primary collision factors were responsible for about 64% of all injury collisions in the county. And unsafe speed was at the top of the list, resulting in 26% of injury crashes, 20% of KSI crashes, and a number of fatal crashes, as you can see here. It's also worth noting that impaired driving or cycling, while it was responsible for a relatively lower percentage of those injury crashes more generally, was accountable for a very high percentage of fatal crashes. On the right, we can see charts showing the percentage of crash that involved users of different modes. So at the top, this is all crashes, and this is the only time in this presentation that I will be including those injury, or sorry, those property damage-only collisions. And we see that in the county, looking at all collisions, the majority is involving motor vehicles only, so 82%. And then we see 8% involving cyclists, 5% involving pedestrians, and 5% involving motorcyclists. And it's worth noting that most of these crashes with these three vulnerable user groups also involve motor vehicles as well. So when we look at the bottom chart, which shows collisions that resulted in an injury or a fatal crash, we see that those vulnerable user groups are much more highly represented. So we have 19% of injury and fatal crashes involving cyclists, 14% involving pedestrians, and 7% involving motorcyclists. And this really just draws home the need to focus safety recommendations and safety improvements to benefit those vulnerable user groups. So now I'm going to talk a bit about San Rafael-specific data. So during this study period from 2017 to 2021, there were 737 collisions resulting in an injury or a fatality on a non-state-owned collector or arterial road in the city. There were three fatalities as well during this time. Two of them involved pedestrians, and those were located at the intersections of Fourth and G and Third and Lincoln. And then one involved a train, and that occurred on North San Pedro and Los Rancitos. There are also 58 severe injury collisions, and this makes up over a quarter of all the severe injury collisions in the county. Compared to the previous five years, so 2012 to 2016, we saw that all injury collisions and fatalities did decrease as a percentage, but severe injuries did go up during that time. This chart shows the top primary collision factors, looking specifically at San Rafael. And we can see once again, unsafe speed is really leading the pack. And the top four primary collision factors were responsible for about 65% of all injury collisions. Unsafe speed was responsible for almost 20% of those injury collisions. And then automobile right-of-way violations, so if a driver didn't yield the right-of-way to another driver, was responsible for 16% of crashes. Traffic signals and sign violations, which are, say, running a red light or a stop sign, accounted for 15%. And improper turning accounted for 14%. Pedestrian right-of-way violations, so a driver failing to yield the right-of-way to a pedestrian who's crossing the street, was accounted for a relatively low percentage of those all injury crashes, but 20% of those KSI, so those fatal or severe injury crashes, and two of the three fatalities that occurred in the city. Looking at crashes by mode, we see that 60% involved a motor vehicle only. 16% of crashes involved a cyclist, and about 1 in 5 of these were automobile right-of-way violations, so a driver failing to yield. About another 1 in 5 was caused by improper turning. And we saw a lot of these crashes happening around Lincoln and Third, and then in the Canal District along Bellum. 19% of crashes in the city involved a pedestrian, and 74% of these pedestrian crashes occurred when a pedestrian was in a crosswalk. We saw hotspots of these around the Smart Station and the Transit Center, as well as along V Street. And then 5% of crashes involved motorcyclists, and almost half of these were automobile right-of-way violations, so either the motorcyclist or the driver of another vehicle failing to yield. And we saw these mainly downtown. We also attempted to sort of analyze a proxy for transit rider collisions. We don't know actually who was riding transit and got struck by a vehicle, but we did analyze pedestrian crashes within 100 feet of bus stops to see if there were any bus stop locations that might have high numbers of crashes. And we saw that there were five at the stops around Lincoln and Mission, four at Granton Third, and then another four at the Transit Center. As part of the local road safety plan, we developed a high collision network. And we developed this network for the whole county, basically identifying the road segments and intersections with the highest collision rates. And we found that 20 road segments and 35 intersections were located in San Rafael. And this is more segments and intersections than were in any other jurisdiction. The top segments in San Rafael were along Tumalpais, Lincoln, and A, whereas the top intersections were at Lincoln and Mission, Third and Grand, and Los Galinas and North Gate. We also identified what are called emphasis areas. And these are essentially high-priority issues where there's opportunity to improve. So these are essentially certain characteristics of crashes that we can identify, see that are overrepresented at the city level compared to the county, and then develop goals and strategies to mitigate. So this chart to the right shows the list of 11 emphasis areas that were developed for the entire county. And these cover things like different road user types, different crash types, different collision factors, and external conditions. And then we analyzed the percentage of each of these crashes at the city level compared to the county level. So you can see San Rafael is highlighted right here. We did assign more emphasis areas to jurisdictions that had a higher number of crashes. So for example, Belvedere-- So for example, Belvedere and Tiburon, which had very low crashes, only have a few emphasis areas. And this slide shows, uh, just a close up on those San Rafael emphasis areas. So they do include a number of road users, uh, such as pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcyclists. They include a collision factor, so unsafe speed was highly represented in those crashes at the city compared to the county levels. Same with dark conditions, and then broadside collisions and sideside collisions. So for each of these emphasis areas, we developed a goal that is in line with the overall vision of the plan. So for example, for pedestrian collisions, the goal would be to, um, to eliminate severe injuries and fatalities from pedestrian collisions. We developed a number of strategies to help reach this goal. This slide shows an overview of these strategies. And, um, the local road safety plan itself is, is very detailed for each jurisdiction, for each emphasis area. We have a number of strategies, but this just sort of gives a general idea about what some of those might look like. And these are based on the Caltrans Strategic Highway Safety Plan's five Es of education, enforcement, engineering, emergency response, and emerging technology. So we're really trying to come at this from a holistic, multifaceted way, uh, to really improve safety. And so, for example, for education, um, strategies could include educating children as well as educating adults through different campaigns. Enforcement could be either passive enforcement, such as speed feedback signs, or more targeted active enforcement. Engineering includes, uh, any number of proven countermeasures. And we have a whole appendix to the plan that gives a lot more detail on those. Emergency response could be, um, emergency vehicle preemption systems or targeted first responder training. And then emerging technology is a whole host of emerging technologies, such as video data or using smart signals to improve conditions. We also developed a list of priority project locations. Um, and these reflect high-impact improvements that would be good candidates for grant funding. Uh, we took the high collision network and then met with jurisdictions to see where their priorities were, what made the most sense in terms of countermeasures, uh, to improve conditions, and developed more detailed recommendations for this subset of locations. And so there were a number for San Rafael, and this is just one example of Lincoln and Mission avenues, where we suggest some potential signal improvements or crossing improvements or bicycle improvements based on the crash trends that we were seeing. And then lastly, for the plan, um, we also included a section that gives some guidance on implementation and evaluation. This includes next steps and a timeline for implementation, so distinguishing which recommendations, strategies, and projects would be short, medium, and long term. Uh, we also discussed some of the potential funding sources for these recommendations, including those federal safety grants that I mentioned earlier. And we give some guidance as well on coordination, partnerships, policy support, and we suggest some evaluation metrics to help track, uh, progress towards that ultimate vision. So with that, I will turn it over for Karen.
Hi, I just wanted to go into a few things that San Rafael is already doing. I mean, this plan has been developed over the last few years, so not everybody's perfect, but we are trying. And we have been doing a lot of things to move towards the goals that are in this plan. So for instance, you know, just, I'll just point out a few of the key plans and studies we've done. We did a canal community-based transportation plan that TAM supported us on in 2022. And so we've already been working on several items that were identified in that plan. And we continue to seek funding for those. Uh, the next thing that's coming up in the next year or two is we're going to be working on our bicycle and pedestrian citywide plan update. Uh, so that was last updated in 2018, but our plan is to update it over the next year, year and a half. We also, you know, uh, we also help support the local road safety plan. There was projects identified in the downtown precise plan. A few things I wanted to list that I listed on the bottom, projects by others. So there's a few projects that are going on in the city. For instance, the Transit Center, which is, which we heard a presentation a, a few weeks ago from the Golden Gate Bridge and Highway District. And so that project is located in one of these key high collision areas. And a couple of their intersections, they're, they're looking at doing some bicycle and pedestrian improvements on two of them. But as Jen identified, there are showed in the slide, there's, there's more along that north-south greenway and then also connection to Grand. And so those, those are things the city is looking at getting grant funding for. So that, that project's kind of a collaboration between, you know, the city and transit, although they're separate projects. It's all in that same high collision area. Uh, we also have the 580 101 multimodal and local access improvement project. So that project will, uh, as mentioned earlier tonight, that will be coming to the city council sometime in the next couple of months. And that's a project led by TAM. The, uh, priority project that was identified in that, for that, in that, that's also related to that project is on Bellum Boulevard. And the city has already tried to, has applied for and attempted to get grants on Bellum Boulevard to, to solve, uh, the conditions on Bellum Boulevard to help with pedestrian and bike safety. We'll continue to pursue grants on, on that corridor. In addition, we support, uh, TAM on their, on their multimodal project and meet with them, uh, monthly on that bigger project. Uh, some of the programs that Jen also mentioned that the city's involved in, we, you know, we attend monthly, uh, Safe Routes to Schools meetings. We also participate, I've been basing the banners in downtown that we put up for, for Street Smarts Marin. Uh, those happen a couple of times a year. Uh, we participate in the TAM Crossing Guard program. And then we also have, um, we've recently become a smart city. So we have video detection and automated signal, signals with our MyoVision cameras at, I think, half of our traffic signals in San Rafael. And then I'm just flip to the next slide that talks about our annual programs. So several of our annual programs, these are more smaller projects that don't, that aren't necessarily evaluated in our CAP, but they're smaller projects that are high impact. So we have a crosswalk improvement. So each of these, we set aside money from our gas tax or traffic mitigation fees to go into these individual programs. So one of them is for crosswalk improvements. We installed different rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which are pedestrian activated and the lights flash. So, so, uh, vehicles can see that and hopefully stop. And then we have flashing stop signs, and then we do some high disability ladder crosswalk. So some of the locations that we did this year, we, we installed some of those rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Mission. We did some on Lincoln, the stop signs, we did both Fifth and Mission this year. So we, so we slowly do different projects, uh, related to this program. We also do sidewalk, sidewalk and curb replacement. So we set aside money to do different curb ramps. For instance, the county is doing, has a grant, uh, to install a bunch of audible pedestrian push buttons all in downtown. And so a lot of those areas don't have accessible curb ramps. So the city is using the budget this year to replace those curb ramps. So we have not only accessible traffic signals, but accessible curb ramps for pedestrians to help with safety. And then I already went into a little bit of our, of our smart city implementation, uh, with our MyoVision cameras and pedestrian push buttons. We also hire consultants to help us analyze intersections and do something called like leading pedestrian interval, which allows the pedestrian to start walking before, uh, vehicles have a green light so that there's more visibility that pedestrians are already in the crosswalk. If there's, these are small kind of low-hanging fruits that we, that we put into our programs in order to help improve, um, these key areas. Also in our pavement management program, uh, this year, we had a project up in North San Rafael where we, not only did we do the high-visibility crosswalks, but we also did bicycle buffers in areas that were identified in the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And then, um, we also have our maintenance operating budget. These are just a few things related to specifically what we're talking about. We, you know, we add additional signage, we do some refreshing striping, we also, you know, fix potholes and digouts. And then here's just a couple of our recent accomplishments on kind of the bigger project side. Uh, we just finished Third Street. I love the pictures of the before and after, you know, TAM had their photographer do both before and after for us. And it just, I mean, that used to be a four-foot maybe on a good day sidewalk. And now there's a bike path and sidewalk, and it's a mu- much more friendly area. And then we're about to wrap up the Grand Avenue Cycle Track. Uh, and then these are a few of the other projects that we've done in the last couple of years. And then, uh, so here are, one of the things that Jen mentioned, that this local road safety plan, if, if adopted, it helps us with grant funding. So see, these are some of the key grant-funded projects we've gotten in the last year and a half. And so it's really critical for us to be able to apply for things like that because we can't afford to do any of these projects without the support of, of state, federal, and local money. So the Second and Fourth Street project had OBG three, that was about 3 million. Lincoln Avenue Intersection Improvements was an H ship, which was, which is one of the grants identified that needs a local road safety plan approved. That involves a couple of intersections on Lincoln, which I know is a key priority area. So we're hoping to get additional funding to do even more intersections on Lincoln. And then we have the two ATP grants we got, both in the Canal, one's a swing bridge, one's more, the transportation experience is more pedestrian transit focused. And then, yeah, recently, we got the Reconnecting Communities in San Rafael Meadows, and then a couple other crosswalk safety projects that we got through the TFCA, TDA, which went to council a few months ago. So then I guess next steps, um, we, this, the, uh, staff is recommending that we adopt the local road safety plan. And specifically, you know, Chapter 16 outlines, um, specifically San Rafael and what we should do in San Rafael. And then, um, so, so, uh, then we're going to work towards securing federally funds and then really evaluating the local road safety plan and look at creating like a vision zero action plan. So there's a lot of, excuse me. There's a lot of things that are transit focused and that we are going to work into our work plan, which will also come to the city council in a, in a next month or in a couple of months. So that includes, um, kind of our, looking at unsafe speeds. There's a bunch of different assembly bills that were passed that now we have to look at how to implement. And so we have a lot of things going on that will improve, you know, all modes for safety. And all of these are, are support and relate to kind of what's in the local road safety plan. And so with that, if you have any questions for us, um.
Thank you, Director Miller. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Bill. We might have questions for all of you, um, and I will start with Councilmember Bushy, your questions.
Thank you. I have two primary areas of, um, question groups. And one is at the sort of higher level strategic, um, planning perspective. And the other is down in the, the nuts and bolts level. So I'm going to start, if you're ready, Director Miller, at the strategic level. And it, it's clear we have a, a very rigorously analyzed, um, uh, report in front of us. And my question to you as our director is, was there anything in this that surprised you? Or that was not consistent with how you already see sort of the safety hotspots on, in, in San Rafael?
I'm going to say no. A lot of the projects that were identified in the priority areas were areas that we were already trying to seek grant funding. So there are areas, you know, with the north-south greenway and the Transit Center. I mean, there's different areas that, that we've been trying to seek funding, and we know that's next on our list. So, I, I mean, the, the projects that were identified were not a surprise.
Okay, so i- is it safe to say then that this, is that a pun? This, um, report, um, adds to, um, the work that you're already doing. Um, it will be, it will assist to hopefully in getting some of those much-needed grants.
Yeah, it helped, it helped with, you know, having a outline on a guide on how we, you know, different ways to implement it. The locations that, like I said, I kind of had an idea considering funding, but it definitely helps guide us and give short-term, you know, help with short-term, medium-term, long-term ideas.
All right, great. Thank you. Now I want to switch to the nuts and bolts and maybe, maybe the, uh, the consultant can, can help us with this. I often enjoy a front row seat on, on Third Street on watching the young people in our community who attend San Rafael High School negotiate the, um, crossing Third Street, um, at the place where we, at great expense, built a, um, a crosswalk that can be activated by the mere pressing of a button. And they don't, they wander into the street, um, it's, it's, it's maddening to see that those facilities right there, prime, beautiful, brand-new facilities not being used. So is there anyone, really anywhere, can tell us what can be done about that? I, I noticed that Caltrans has five Es and one of them is education. Is, is that the answer, or is there one, or is this a common thing?
I mean, education is one of the top things. We can look at, you know, I know we have meetings with the schools, so we can consider bringing this up with the schools and figuring out how, um, they go about with education or how they need, they'd like us to come, you know, do a presentation on education to show them how to signal works. But.
I sit through my. Okay, all right, so, all right, so I'm getting the sense that there's, there's not an, an action plan item on how to get people, get pedestrians to actually use the safety measures that are at their disposal.
Yeah, and you know, one of our, um, one of the things listed on our low, low-hanging fruit is to make sure we add pedestrian push buttons on more of our traffic signals downtown. So it's going to have to be a very common thing that people are going to have to start pressing the button instead of automatically turning with a little person walking on the signal. Actually, it won't turn unless people activate it. So there's going to need to be education besides that crosswalk or in addition to, in downtown to remind people, if you, you know, if you want to cross, to really, you need to be, you need to activate it.
Oh, so maybe if we make it more the norm in San Rafael that you have to press the button, maybe that particular one would use. All right, excellent plan, as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Great. Thank you for the update. What is the schedule cycle to redo? And does the whole report have to be redone, or can you just update with data? Because this ended, the data span was ended in 2021. And I'm wondering, when does '22 and '23 come on board? Or do we wait another 10 years or whatever it is?
Yeah, so in the report, uh, I believe we stated that the data could be updated as needed approximately every four or five years. I think, uh, updating every year is, uh, a lot of effort. And so I think a lot of the trends that we're seeing now, we're still going to be seeing as the 2022 and 2023 data come up. However, after a certain point, it would make sense to, um, update and just reassess the trends.
But can I add in comparison? So the county did a systematic safety analysis report back in 2018. And that was the document we were using to get grants. And then, so, you know, that was about, you know, five, six years ago. So, uh, you know, we haven't determined exactly what the timeframe is, but that's how long we waited for the last one.
Right. Just, I just wanted to add, it's a really great question because we're not, there isn't a regulatory reason that we need to adopt this plan. It really is to make the commitment to vision zero and what it means and what it represents. And, and we all know that's a very aspirational goal. And as, as April mentioned, and you heard our team have done an incredible job of securing grants, but really needing to make sure this commitment is at the city council level to prime us for those grants moving forward. But because the projects are so incredibly expensive and multi-year, then I think that the, the timeframe, that four- to six-year timeframe of needing a data refresh once we're hopefully successful in continuing to make progress on those projects, um, will make sense to come back.
Thank you. And I, yeah, I did see that in the report and sort of my expectation. I was just wondering, from a grant, the grantors, what their expectation is also. And then the other question I had was around, do we anticipate at some point that there'll be differentiation of the, between e-bike and standard bike if the, within the accidents? Or will they all fall under bike?
I, I can add to that too. Maybe we can pull up the website, but Dr. Willis, a public health officer, has a whole bunch of data. And I think that's being really fleshed out through, through, um, Marin County Department of Public Health. So I would imagine that a refresh on that, this data is going to integrate the work that they're doing to data gather there to really try to better understand those trends as we move forward.
Yeah, so I'll say that this analysis was based on data pulled from the statewide, uh, crash registry system. And as of this point, they do not distinguish between e-bikes and conventional bikes. And hopefully that is something that will be done in the future. We'll, we'll have to see. But, um, like was mentioned, uh, the public health department and hospitals are really doing a good job of, of starting to track this data. And so going forward, future refreshes, I imagine we will be able to incorporate that as well.
Right. So, and then my other question, it's sort of, or verges on the comment area. We have so many plans that we've done, whether it's a economic plan or the downtown precise plan. plan and the housing element, they all start integrating together. And like this information and this data, how, how do we share this information internally with all those key other plans that are happening? I know it will probably be front and center with the bicycle pedestrian committee working on the strategic plan, their plan or that plan. So, but how about all the other different areas and departments that maybe would look like it's independent, but they're not? That was the comment in the question.
Yeah, part of our, you know, our vision zero action plan and part of our citywide bike and pedestrian plan is to look at all of these plans we keep doing and, and really identify, you know, prioritize, look at them all. Because, yeah, we have a lot of plans and a lot of plans are required because they look at so many different things. So our, our plan is to help, you know, navigate those. And then also we work, you know, we work really closely with, you know, like community development on developments and we're working on creating objective standards and relating it to the, you know, bike and pedestrian plan, if it's on their front edge and, and trying to find other ways to have developments assist with some of these improvements.
I'll just add to that, to what April said. There are deliverables or, or key milestones where that integration, that collaboration between departments needs to happen. It's impromptu when we do a general plan progress update, right? There, there's tons of cross-departmental collaboration behind the scenes, but it's a really good question because some of these plans are different periods in time. And then there's like Venn diagrams where they, three or four might intersect. And so I, I applaud the team for really making sure on a project by project basis, they're working together. But then also like the bike and ped master plan, how does this relate to that? How do we make sure that, you know, that, that number of years that this, you know, the vision zero action plan is, how many years is that going to be? It's 2050, right? And how, how many years is the bike and ped master plan going to be? So I almost see it as that's a shorter term work plan for a longer term aspirational plan that's going to happen. You know, almost like our CIP, how, right? We cycle things through based on criteria and prioritization and available funds on an annual basis.
Yeah, I appreciate that because it does seem like all paths of it, no pun intended, all paths come back to public works. And so it definitely is, is something that I think we need to keep in mind. So it does look like apples and apples, especially when we're talking to the community and when we're actually applying for grants.
Thank you. And I'll just add on as part of that answer. There is a countywide transportation plan committee. It's a subset of TAM. And really what, and Director Miller was talking about this, these grants are so important and we're competing with the other jurisdictions. And so having TAM take the leadership role that they've been taking and having our fellow jurisdictions also realize the priority of some of these projects. Because your question is really, I mean, it's spot on because you were talking about it from San Rafael, but it's the same question and the same comment from a broader standpoint. And I was able to see the entire presentation at the TAM board meeting, and this is just the piece that's relevant to us, but I think that is something we're wrestling with because of the limited fundings and the fact that the grants are so competitive. So I just wanted to add that. I had, also had two questions, and I'm going to ask the same question that I asked at TAM because I thought it was important. When we looked at this data, and I know we're only looking at San Rafael tonight, but when the big presentation, when we saw our data compared to all the other cities, it's quite remarkable, really, that the, the data, the collision data is much, much higher in San Rafael. So the question that I had asked, it's obvious, San Rafael, we are at the intersection, the literal intersection, east-west and north-south. If there's any way to disaggregate the data to figure out what's local traffic, you know, I'm driving to my dentist appointment or I'm going to the post office versus a person that's flooring it from Fairfax to 101. Okay, I'm just, I'm not, don't mean to pick on Fairfax, but you know, my point. And so I'd mentioned that before and said, I mean, Jen, you can give the same answer, but I do think that's part of what we're seeing here. It's not necessarily, so we can do all the education in the world for our community, but if it's folks that are passing through here. So I'm curious, because I've asked it before, if there's more thinking that you might have had from when I asked it before.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, the, the data we use is based off police reports and the, the police reports can tell us a lot of data, you know, exactly where it occurred, all of the contributing factors, but they don't record where the person was coming from or where they were going to. So we really can't disaggregate that. But I think this is where some of that coordination and policy and just looking at things on a more regional scale comes in. It, you know, it's, it's great that we were able to do this plan for the whole county and give recommendations for the whole county. And so hopefully moving forward as the whole county is hopefully striving towards this goal of eliminating collisions and serious injuries, there can be some sort of coordination and working together to make sure that people are getting educated in Fairfax and in San Rafael and wherever else so that they practice safe behaviors or, you know, engineering improvements are being made so that when people are traveling from one place to another, they are able to drive more safely and hopefully reduce and eliminate those crashes.
And that's an excellent point because TAM board is interested, very interested in vision zero, which is not, wouldn't just be a San Rafael program, it would be countywide. I had one other question for Director Miller, and so it really builds on what my colleagues were talking about. So how does all this interact with our CIP planning? Because we have that big document. So now we have the actual data of intersections that we know we want to prioritize. So is this data somehow factored into the prioritization of needs now that we have this really deep data?
Yeah, so currently, the way we evaluate, yeah, yeah, some of it does because we know the collision history and stuff. But next fiscal year, our plan is to reevaluate the criteria that we score the CIP, and we're going to have different factors. Is it in the local road safety plan? Oh, you get one point more. Is it in the general plan? You get one more, one more point. So we're, we want to specifically tie to these documents. But yes, they, I mean, right, even right now, it's, safety is one of our factors, equity is one of our factors, community, our community priorities, like, so it is, but it's not specifically, is it in this document? And we're definitely going to have a planning, like, is it in a planning document gets more credit? So we're going to be working on that. And I'm sure the bike and ped, our bicycle pedestrian committee will hear about that too, and then we'll probably bring it to council at some point, too.
Fantastic. I think figuring out how to integrate this data into, into our planning is, is wonderful. Okay, well, there might be more questions that come up. Let me open it up to the public. If there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item or have questions of their own, now is your time. You've got two minutes. Hi, Dave. Welcome.
Thank you. Hey, everybody. If you don't know me already, I'm Dave Rhodes. I am the co-chair of Walk-Bike San Rafael, and we are an 80-plus member organization that's focused on making it safer to walk and bike in San Rafael. And I appreciate everything that was stated tonight that we're already doing. And as I think, you know, Mayor Kate noted, that the data shows that our city is one of the most unsafe cities of our size in the state, which is pretty scary if you're outside of a, a motor vehicle, which tend to be all of us at some point, I want to remind everybody. And, and most of those, most, I do want to remind everyone that most of the interactions that, an accident, so you get to say a crash is, the incidents are between cars and trucks versus pedestrian bikes due to speed or ride away violations. I think that's really important. And also it's, you know, it doesn't really matter if you're on an e-bike or a, or a, or a regular bike or walking, you know? If a car violates your ride away, you know, it doesn't really matter what kind of bike you're riding. Anyway, we really strongly support the local road safety plan. I think it's a really good report. And of course, the future vision zero action plan, that's, that's super important to eventually adopt. But, you know, having a vision zero goal is super important that this adoption would, would take place. And so we really support that. We do also support and recommend a goal of zero fatalities before 2050. Like to remind folks that I will probably be a grandfather by then, which is bananas because I have a two-year-old and another one on the way. So like, that's pretty crazy that like, we're going to accept people dying on our roads until 2050. So let's try to not do that. I'm serious. Anyway, as always, thank you so much for your consideration for this measure and for continuing your dedication to improving our wonderful city.
Thank you for your comments. Others, yeah, welcome.
Hi, I'm Joe Mulligan, a Glenwood homeowner, and I'm representing, I'm the safety director of the Marin Cyclists, a 500-member recreational cycling club. And I'd also like to say thank you for considering vision zero. I think it's a wonderful program. I've seen it in New York, and I think it's integral to the safety of everyone who's vulnerable as cyclists. Also, I'd like to kind of repeat what Dave had mentioned in a similar fashion. We have many seniors in our club, and even today I just rode with half a dozen who are octogenarians. And so, you know, I think it would be great to try and get this done in terms of achieving vision zero before 26 years. A lot of those vulnerable folks who actually, safety is a more larger concern for these people at this age, are much more, more vulnerable than your average recreational cyclist who's fit and young. And so I really appreciate vision zero, but I hope that it can also be done sooner. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, welcome.
Albertary Gersel Park. It wasn't my intention of speaking about this tonight, but since the subject came up, I was going through my experiences on the streets since I travel by bike, walking and my motor scooter. So I have a lot of different experiences. One I had recently where I was running, coming down Second Street, and being a creature of habit, I kind of got used to the fact that that leading pedestrian interval might be existent on a particular corner. And then I came to find out that not all corners exhibit that particular feature. So I was a little worried that others might also fall into the trap of thinking they have a few extra seconds when in fact they don't. And in certain circumstances where somebody's flying through on the other side of the street, you're, you're, you're pretty much dead on spot. So I think that would be something to consider. I love data. I live with data and I hear a large source of data and I'm like, can I see that? And how current is it? And if I heard correctly, this data only goes to 2021. And yet they are making changes currently, many changes, listed 15 at least I heard, where your, your data is three, four years old, but the changes that you're making are current. So I'm wondering how it is you're validating the effectiveness, efficacy of the change? Is it through health department, hospitals and police reports? Are you getting those more readily? And are you able to say, I made change to XYZ and now I'm seeing an increase in deaths and, or injuries? Or is it something different? Are we waiting for updated data to come to a conclusion as to whether or not the things we're changing are actually reducing the number of injuries or fatalities? Again, I'll write up a bunch of other stuff I had on here since I'm out of time, but thank you for the, Leon.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone. I'll close the public comment. And I know those were comments, but I think there were two good questions inherent in there. One was around how we're selecting the leading pedestrian intersections. And then the second one, how the efficacy of any sort of changes or infrastructure as opposed to waiting for the next data dump, how are we going to know that we're, our changes are paying off?
Yeah, so the, one of the things that's in our programs is we, we're looking at different intersections to upgrade the leading pedestrian interval. We would like to do it everywhere, but some of, some of the times it requires an upgraded traffic signal, which, you know, can cost $350, $400,000. So that's some of the reasons why we don't have it in certain locations. But we're going to, our plan is to, to review every single intersection traffic signal. There's 90 of them. And to look at which ones have that, which ones don't. And we're working with our contractor who reviews them, reviews a certain amount quarterly. So within a year, we'll know what's at every single one of the intersections and know what would be needed in order to achieve that or what kind of upgrades we need to do at those intersections. So we're working on that, but when we upgrade a signal, we do look at, should there be a leading pedestrian interval here at, when it's new? And then one of the questions was about the metrics. And so part of the vision zero action plan will help us with, you know, figuring out those metrics. We do, for instance, if we're going after grants, we, we do pull recent, more recent data than in this report. We can pull the collision history in certain areas that are of concern, that are more recent than, than this. We just don't do an entire citywide or countywide data and to look at. But we need to figure out kind of what those metrics are to, to show that we're improving. I mean, we're doing things that are in the local road safety plan to help improve, but kind of what metrics do we want to track? We need to identify those.
Thank you. Additional questions before comments? No, it's me, okay? Why don't you go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz with closing comments.
Appreciate the update and the report. I know we went off a little bit of the purpose of the report, but I think it helps answer a lot of questions and provides some clarity. I know when I first started on the council, I used a lot of just, just create a crosswalk. Just make it, put a stop sign in. Just, and I'm now very clearly realizing the level of complexity to those type of requests. And trying to communicate that to the community is hard because it does feel like it should just be easy. And so I really appreciate having the data and the background behind that. It is frustrating how expensive these projects are when they are so vital for safety. And when we talk about vision zero, what, Third, Third Street was over 20 million? Right? It's incredibly expensive to do these projects, and even the small ones. You would, you would think it would just, just be a just, just get the sign out. And they're still very, very expensive for us. So I really appreciate having this. I hope it does help us get additional grants and happy to move this forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I share Councilmember Kurtz's appreciation of the rigorous analysis that has gone into this and that has brought these issues forward. And also her disappoint, disappointment isn't the right word. I don't know, dissatisfaction that just knowing that these are where our safety challenges are, there should be resources available to address them and there aren't. And so it's like, our director of public works, the first thing to do is figure out what needs to be done and then go out and become a grants writer and find the, find the funding for it. So, but that said, this moves us forward. It makes it easier to get those grants and will help us spend the, the dollars that we do get in the most impactful way. So I absolutely support the measure and I'll be forward to voting for it.
Thank you. And I'll just echo the gratitude. I mean, this is important to all of us. We talk about wanting to get people out of their cars, onto the streets, and we need to have the infrastructure that supports that behavior. There's benefits to businesses that have walk-by traffic, then people go in. We have benefits in terms of reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. Like this is really an important nexus. And Parametrics and Parisi did a great job with the data. There was so much data that was presented, and again, not just for our jurisdictions, that I'm really appreciative. So thank you and thank you to TAM. Thank you, Bill, and thank you to Ann Richmond. When we heard the presentation at TAM and, and just so you know, it's not only San Rafael and Nevada is also up there, too. And I spoke with Ann after and said, is there a benefit to having an additional presentation in San Rafael and to have us approve it so we can be, maybe be just a smidge more competitive when we're going after those grants? We agreed that was a good idea. So TAM and Parametrics and Parisi is not going to all the jurisdictions. They're just coming to San Rafael and to Nevada for this additional kind of layer of approval. So really grateful to TAM and then to the TAM board members. I know everyone sits on the dais, TAM, it's 15 of us up there, 17 of us, a lot of us. And I'm really grateful that the other jurisdictions, the electeds there, they see this and because they bought into vision zero, it's not just, oh, only in my town. They really understand the through, the throughput through our city streets. So I, I feel fully confident that we'll continue to compete really, really well in the regional and local level for these funds to, to have these projects go forward. And we'll just keep chipping away at it. That's what we'll do, is keep chipping away at it. So with that, again, thank you for bringing this forward, and I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'm happy to make a motion. Adopt the 2024 Marin Countywide Local Road Safety Plan and adopt chapter 16 of the 2024 Marin Countywide Local Road Safety Plan as the City of San Rafael Local Road Safety Plan.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. Appreciate you all being here.
So two more things before we adjourn, or one more thing. We have open time for public expression. That's for anything that is not on tonight's agenda.
That's for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Now is your chance to have two minutes to speak with the council. I'll open up, open time for public expression. Welcome, Al.
Hey. Hello, City Council. It's a beautiful day today. I wrote something up. At prior city council meetings, we were presented with many examples of staff efforts designed to encourage the creation of new housing, kind of policing policies, and update emergency regulations since many of the old processes used to manage this work were no longer appropriate to the current context of today's world. It was the eternal optimist before you that gleaned in these actions a willingness to consider the likelihood and possibility that other departments' procedures written many years ago could also be advantaged by a critical eye with the intention of making them relevant to the new and emerging challenges of today, instead of, as some embittered might suggest, be a poor excuse designed not to protect the health and safety of San Rafael residents, that being the primary role of city government, but a means to check off a task even if unfinished due to difficulty. That being said, I implore you to devote more time to those less frequent and more difficult tasks which present harm and discard to the community.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to approach the council?
Madam Mary, esteemed councilmembers. My name's Jana Blunt. I am here in support of and in honor of your workforce, as you can see from the beautiful sea of purple behind me. Some of these very workers are here to speak on behalf of their teams and their departments, but most importantly, the members of the community that they serve. So what we ask of you this evening is to take their message seriously. These are the individuals who are responsible for each of the services that we're all proud to provide the public. They're in the streets, they're behind counters, they're visiting and inspecting homes, they're even teaching our residents small children. So what our city workers can tell us about the state of our city's services should be held paramount. I have faith that you hold these workers with the same reverence and appreciation as our community does. So as the leaders of this city, please heed their words. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Don't be shy. Come on, don't be shy. Come on down.
Yes, good evening to members of the City Council. If you don't know me, I am Margaret Stowawi. I am with Library and Rec. And I have been a librarian permanently in a position for the last 17 years, but if you count extra hire over two decades. And I would like to address some of the concerns that we have about service and keeping staffed properly. Our concern is that services are suffering because we're unable to recruit and retain enough quality staff. The city, our concern is being unable to serve our residents sufficiently. The issue is that we're not being offered livable, competitive wages, and this is directly responsible for the inability to keep positions properly staffed, which has caused a problem to the quality of services to the residents. Because simply, the city's not paying enough money for workers to make ends meet, especially with the high cost of living in Marin County, not to mention San Rafael. So many members of our workforce have no choice but to commute from more affordable areas. And if you have uncompetitive, substandard wages, it's difficult to attract and retain quality employees. There have been high vacancy rates and constant turnover across all departments and job types, from sanitation workers to police officers, parks staff to administrative roles. The city is having difficulty keeping these vital positions filled. And it's even gotten to the point where some desperate city departments are carving out brand-new positions meant for specific staff that they do not wish to lose. So there's a causal effect, and with the inability to recruit and retain workers, there's poor maintenance, declining service levels, and it's a direct consequence of failure to provide livable wages. So please, when the city management comes to the bargaining table, please keep all of this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Welcome.
I'm back. My name is Trish Sarudy Sailors. I work for the Childcare Department, and I am the Director of Vallesito Children's Center. I've been employed for the City of San Rafael for 42 years. I'm very proud of that. Our department is short-staffed. We are unable to recruit new employees and are also struggling to retain who we've hired because of the city's wages have fallen behind. Just looking at the city's open positions, we've been trying to hire parks maintenance workers since last year. Why would you apply here when the starting wage is $500 more in the City of Napa for the same job? Permit technician positions are open until filled at the city and have been advertised for the last three months. Job seekers interested in becoming a permit tech will earn $900 more a month at the County of Marin. How are we supposed to compete? Childcare instructor twos, look at our comparable agencies of Belmont, Emeryville, Larkspur, even Nevada. A city-led compensation study had us wildly below market way back in 2021, up over 30%. Undercompensated. Nothing was done in response to learning this at our last negotiations, and this is why we are primarily staffed with high school students and temp workers. There is no career in the city in childcare for these wages. It is not hard to imagine how this inaction has affected our ability to perform our jobs. Every member of our community is harmed when we aren't taking basic care of ourselves. I hope that you guys provide for us. We, you know, we have a lot of long-term staff here who want to stay, but they're going to go if we can't make a living wage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Mike Castaneda with the Streets Department, Public Works. I don't have anything to read from. I've been with the city for 20, going on 24 years, and I've seen our respective departments and parks and streets go from over 20 people to seven on a good day. And I can remember studies and numbers thrown at us in the past, just through the negotiation process, where it was looking at what we were as a whole with benefits and pay and medical and all these different things. And it just seems like a really big savings that has gone on over what I've seen dry up to a very few. And that these guys are doing, it's a lot of young, it's a lot of people working real hard. We've got few people doing what many used to do and keeping up with it. And they do a hard job. They do sometimes a dangerous job. They're in the winners for you. They're on call for you when you need them. I commonly hear, I can't believe you're here so quick. Thank you so much for what you do. I just think that I've seen people begin to leave and not look at this job like a career anymore. And that, that's a shame, because I think you're going to get more out of us if we feel appreciated, if we're proud of what we do. It's almost creating an apathy. And I hate to see people go, and I hate to see the folks that are trying real hard behind me to keep up with it, you know, not get what I believe they've got coming. I mean, they're, they're doing, they're doing it. Very few people are doing it. And like I said, a lot of the times, it's really unsafe, what we do. And they do a great job with a great attitude, and I just would like you to, to not forget them. So, thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm James Dunn, San Rafael resident and Parks Maintenance employee for the last seven years here at the city. I come before you this evening with two items. The first is, in the last seven years, I've seen Mary Beth, I've seen Kate, and I've seen the former guy, Phillips, down on Morphe Street. I know you're not coming to visit me. I know there's important work upstairs amongst the cubicles and the paper pushers. But I encourage you to visit the first floor, visit the steel toe boots and the shovels. We interact with the public every day. We will give you the real deal on what the public feels like. Come on down. My second item concerns vacancies in the Parks Department. We've had three for several months, we're down to two, and that may be filled shortly. Two of these guys, I asked, hey, why are you leaving me? Am I not the most awesome coworker to have? And they say, yes, Jim Dunn, you, sir, are awesome. And I go, why are you leaving? And they say, well, the City of San Rafael pays bottom dollar. I can make more money somewhere else. So I say, well, you're going to the private sector. And they say, no, I'm going to another public agency here in the Bay Area. Vacancies cause confusion, delay, going, paying low wages is not the way to run a business. With that, I leave you tonight. I thank you for your time. And just one more thing, don't forget about us and don't be cheap.
Thank you, Jim, for your comments.
Hi, thank you so much for being here, and I recognize all familiar faces. My name is Erin, I work in CDD, and I love my job. I just wanted to say, I called PG&E the other day, and my bill went up, and they're like, yes, everybody's bill went up 12.8%. And I was kind of shocked. I am going to be newly divorced, and I'm trying to stay in Nevada. I just want to let you know that if you really care about the people that work for you, show them. And I know that you have a job to do and you have to keep costs down, but people work really hard. I hear a lot in my department, I know of three people that are looking, and it makes me sad, because they say other jurisdictions pay more. And I love the people that I work with, and I know that you guys care about the city a lot. And I love everybody that I work with. I just, you know, I was talking to my 24-year-old, and she's like, Mom, I do a job, and the two things that I want to know in my job is, A, I'm appreciated, and they tell me, and two, show me the money. Show me that you care about me, because that shows me that you care about the hard work that I'm doing. So again, I just hope that you will consider maybe more than you were thinking about, because everyone in my department in CDD loves working here. I was talking to people tonight, and they're like, we love our job. We love our job, but we have to make a living. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Monica Roberts. I work in, excuse me, my voice is kind of hoarse. I work in the Childcare Division downtown at Parkside Pre-School, so I have a few things that I would like to say. With severe staffing shortages, we who remain are being asked to do far more with far less support. Many workers are under pressure to skip breaks and work overtime to try to keep up with workloads. This level of overwork is completely unsustainable and is taking a major physical and mental toll on your dedicated public servants. Overworked and fatigued employees are more prone to making mistakes, even in critical areas like public safety and utilities. The intense stress and burnout causes good employees to become disengaged and look for other job opportunities. You can make $20,000 more per year as an entry-level code enforcement worker in the City of Napa. High turnover only exacerbates the staffing crisis, creating even more gaps in services for residents. Basic city services and maintenance are being deferred or being performed poorly due to inadequate personnel. Overworked road crews cannot keep up with repairs, so potholes persist, leading to vehicle damage and potential accidents. At the staffing level, we simply cannot provide the quality of services that residents expect and deserve. The burnout, safety risks, and decreased service quality will only increase until we have sufficient resources to ease the tremendous burden on existing staff. Investing in our workforce is critical for the city to meet its obligations. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Ortiz. I work for the library. I'm a library assistant for two years, and I have some things to say. Giving the city negotiator greater financial authority at the bargaining table is a key to resolving our staffing and public services crisis. If your negotiator does not have the authority to offer competitive living wages and benefit packages, no deal can be reached, reached to attract and retain quality staff. Your council needs to grant the negotiator the financial flexibility to craft competitive compensation, packages on par with other comparable agencies. Without authority, your negotiator hands are tied, and they cannot realistically negotiate contracts that will resolve our understaffing and decreasing quality of services. Continuing to lower employees with substandard wages offers will only perpetuate the vicious cycle of vacancies, overwork, and diminished public services. As our City Council, please demonstrate your prowess maintaining adequate staffing levels to serve residents properly. Authorizing the negotiator to reach fair bargaining agreements is necessary. Investments to rebuild the city workforce and service capacity. Your alternative option will result in even greater decrease in service quality and more staff jumping, shift to better-paying employers who have maintained sufficient staffing. Please exercise your leadership and empower your team to resolve this crisis. I also want to say that, please think about us when we do, to increase our paycheck. There's, I know a lot of work staff that they even remove this all from healthcare because they can't afford it. They're going to take a lot from their paycheck. Personally, me, I'm always thinking, I'm going to be able to afford my healthcare, because we don't have enough pay increase, so please think about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Welcome.
My name is Gabby Farias, and I work in the Childcare Division. I've been a director at Lucas Valley Children's Center for almost 18 years now. We've explained how the services we provide as city workers are failing because of poor recruitment and retention and worker burnout. We've asked you to invest in our workforce. Our services will continue to suffer and decline until you send the city's negotiator to our bargaining table with an increased authorization. They've told our bargaining team explicitly that they've not been put in a position for any wiggle room. But what's on the table right now doesn't even meet half our region's CPI increase over the past three years. Our workforce is communicating transparently, in good faith, and need the city to respond by acting in good faith by taking our staffing and service crisis seriously. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Gabby. Anybody else? Seems like until I say anybody else, no one sets up. So anybody else? Come on. No? Okay. No, you got your one. Thank you, Jim. I mean, okay. Thank you. With that, I will close the public comment, and tonight, I'm going to adjourn in honor of Ralph Mihon. I met Ralph nearly 20 years ago when I was on the Planning Commission, he was on Park and Rec Commission. Ralph cared about San Rafael, and he cared about nature. He understood the importance of having access to the outdoors and quality places for all of us to recreate. He brought his enthusiasm, wisdom, and persistence to his role as a Park and Rec Commissioner for 38 years. In addition to volunteering for the city, he was also a founding director of the Marin Open Space Trust, called MOST. Started in 2008, MOST has been very impactful in San Rafael. Two of their 10 land protection projects are here in our city. In 2017, MOST acquired three wooded acres in Gristle Park and transferred the property to the city as an addition to the Oakwood Open Space. In December of 2022, MOST acquired a 2.6-acre open space property on San Rafael's Gold Hill, which was ultimately transferred to the city for an addition to the Harry Barbier Memorial Park. Through these acquisitions, as well as his many actions throughout his life, San Rafael is truly a better place for him having been here. I will miss Ralph, and may his memory be a blessing to his wife, May, and sons, Greg and Jeff. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.